Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Strongsville Board of Education Organizational Work Session Meeting, January 6th, 2022. Happy New Year, everyone. Thanks for being here. We could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Laura, we're gonna do it. We'll call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
George, can you take the roll?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Calvain?
Here.
Jim Mikko?
Here.
Ms. Stovall?
Here.
Mrs. Hausen?
Here.
All right. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to George for our oath of office for our two new board members.
Thank you, Mrs. Hausen. Before I proceed, I'm gonna call you as individually, first, Ms. Calvain, Ms. Stovall. Congratulations. Welcome to the Board of Education.
Thank you.
I'm gonna call you individually to the podium and administer the oath of office. So we'll just go in order, starting with Mrs. Calvain. Do you want to raise your right hand? Do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Strongsville City School District, Kiahoga County, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuous and set office until your successor is elected and qualified? If so, would you say adieu?
I do.
Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Strongsville City School District, Kiahoga County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuous and set office until your successor is elected and qualified? If so, please say adieu.
I do.
Welcome and congratulations.
Congratulations, Sharon and Haley. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you.
Item number five, we have the election and oath of office, Board of Education President, to a one-year term. Do I have any nominations for president?
Laura, may I ask a question before we do nominations?
Sure.
Because we have a relatively new board here and two new members, a lot of public and presumably a lot of people watching at home today, George Cameron, is it possible for you to give a rundown for us of what president, the role of president, vice president are, and then how it might differ from the role of the other board members?
Sure. So if you take a look at our board policy bylaws delineate what those roles are. So if you take a look at the Board Presidents, they preside over public meetings, they can call special board meetings, they appoint members to committees, they sign notes, minutes, contracts, and other legal requirements, and they also work and assist in the preparation of the board agenda. In terms of the vice presidents, really what they do is they take over those duties I just mentioned in the absence of the president. So those really are what the roles are. And then the board members, the three other board members are there to provide input, guidance, insight, support, and ultimately, there's no board action unless it's a majority vote or consensus of the board. So no single member of the board holds any more power than any other board member. The board votes and provides direction based on the majority of the board for almost everything except for bond issues and levies. That's a supermajority. But that's the main role of the Board President, and then the vice president steps in in the president's absence.
Can you speak to how it plays out week to week?
So week to week, I spend as superintendent, and I'll let George speak for a treasurer, as superintendent, probably I spend the greatest amount of communication with the Board President, with the other board members and vice presidents, based on the discretion and their communication preferences. But since I've been superintendent here, I would say weekly at minimum communications. We will talk strategy, we will talk about upcoming decisions, we'll look at where we're going with district initiatives. And so that role is crucial in terms of a relationship between me and the board in terms of how we operate and how we provide direction. And then obviously, any decisions of the board are made in public. You're welcome.
George, you have anything?
No, I concur with what Cameron said. On my end, I meet with the, or meet, talk with the Board President at least once a week, and same thing, we give him an update of what I've been working on and the direction we're heading, and in the event of any decisions need to be made. They're made publicly, but we also talk about strategy, too, on just someone to bounce ideas off of. But that goes for the full board as well, if anyone wants to have the same conversations as well.
All right. With that, do we have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Richard Mikko for president.
Are there any other nominations? All right. George, could you take the roll?
And then when I call your name, just state who you're, that you're yes or no on the nomination. Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Calvain?
Yes.
Mr. Mikko?
Yes.
Ms. Stovall?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausen?
Yes.
Motion passes. And then congratulations, Rich, with that.
Congratulations.
Do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as president of the Strongsville City School District, Board of Education, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuous and set office until your successor is chosen and qualified? If so, please say adieu.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Rich, and I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Laura. I appreciate it, and I appreciate the vote of confidence from my fellow board members. I will continue to serve in the best interest of our school district, the taxpayers, the parents, and the students. Obviously, we have a challenging year ahead, but we will continue to do the good work that we've been elected to do. Next on our agenda is election and oath of office of Board of Education Vice President to a one-year term. Do I have any nominations? And I will begin by nominating Mrs. Laura Hausen. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. George, can you take the roll?
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Calvain?
Yes.
Mr. Mikko?
Yes.
Ms. Stovall?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausen?
Yes.
Congratulations, Laura.
Do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as vice president of the Strongsville Board of Education to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuous and set office until your successor is chosen and qualified? If so, would you say adieu?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Sharon and Haley. It is a, it's an important day. Everyone has friends and family in the audience, which is appropriate, and we look forward to a good year. Next is district goals. We always remind ourselves at the early part of a meeting what our district goals are. They remain the same: academic achievement and growth, financial prudence and community engagement. And we judge all of our decisions, we benchmark all of our decisions by those goals. Next is public comment. I do have one person, Dr. Beverly Jones. Happy New Year, Bev. You know the drill. You have approximately three minutes.
All right. So you don't hear me sounding like blah, 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 blah. My name is Dr. Beverly Jones. My address is 15134 Camden Circle, Strongsville. And I would like to say to everybody, Happy New Years and Good Evening. I want to start quickly by saying that my goal is to keep the excellence in Strongsville School. That's why I come to these meetings, and that's why I want, as best I can, to encourage our board and welcome new board members as well. I want to combat any attempts to harm our students in any way, with ideologies especially that will separate them, such as critical race theory, that we know as CRT. So I want to thank Dr. Raiba for answering the questions I asked in November when I was here about the diversity council, and I was very satisfied with those answers because my concern was that CRT was starting to try to creep into our classrooms. And so I did get some statistics and some real good graphs. That was real good information, and I thank you for that. But I have, oh, I said I wouldn't mention names. But our board president, my friend, did look at me, and we had a conversation about whether or not it was going to be an issue that we need to combat. And he smiled at me and said, CRT is not taught in our classrooms. And that's, you know, this is a man of integrity, and I believed him. And what he said to me was true. Okay? And also, our superintendent assured me the same thing, that CRT will not come into our classrooms. He said, he put it in writing, in an email that he sent to me, and I appreciate that also. So I'm not here to break anybody down here, but I need to point out a few things, because I know that you are sincere and that no member here wants to see anything less than the very best for our district. Okay? So I'm with you on that. Okay? So last meeting in December, I'm sitting here, and I am leafing through this handbook distributed by the Strongsville Board of Education. And it has the minutes and the agenda and some reports, and it's like 69 pages long or so. But I get to the back, and I start seeing something that's starting to concern me, that I want to bring up. I discover there was a program with Exhibits G, H, and I that outlined some sessions that you attended in the fall. I'm not sure of the date, but it was called the Capitol Conference, and it was in Columbus, and it was given by the Ohio School Board Association. And you attended these sessions, and I haven't included all the sessions because there were so many, but I want to mark specific ones that were described in the program. So what you had was the title, the room numbers, and a brief description of what you were hearing in the sections. And I just picked out one category. There are several that I could talk about if I had lots of minutes. But diversity, equity, inclusion, we hear that all the time. We hear code words, social emotional learning, we hear these, and they are referring to this philosophy that we know of as critical race theory. And I can provide you with lots and lots of other terms that are used to disguise this so that it can indeed creep into our classrooms. Let me just say some titles here. Deleveling, detracting, and desegregating. Okay? Social justice and equity in action. Teacher tracking and equity, whatever that is. Engage and empower families in your district. You went to these sessions. Best equity practices for Ohio's diverse districts. Okay? Equity, PPE, which means positive parental examples. Empowering inclusion. Myths of urban and rural poverty. Social justice partnerships for equity. Equality and equity. What's a board to do? Measuring what matters. Conducting an equity audit. Let's be careful with those. And this is my favorite. Board leadership on equity and anti-racism. Okay? So you went to these sessions, and I've read all these titles from the booklet that you had out on the table in December. Okay? So I didn't have to go anywhere to find these things. But I suggest that you go back to the notes you took in these sessions and see what actually they were trying to say in these sessions to our board members. No, they didn't say, go in the classroom and teach these. They probably didn't say, tell your teachers to teach this. They went straight to you. So I suggest you go back and take a look at some of those notes that they gave you. Okay? And see how CRT is attempting to creep in through you, from the top down. Who would have thought that that would have been a plan? But that seems to be, according to the, what you issued, what has happened. Okay? Innocent sounding topics that subtly bring these dangerous, these dangerous concepts in. So while we're promising, and you're promising, that CRT is not taught in the classroom, please be aware that the attempts of others, organizations, trying to train you, to train educators, to train administrators of these philosophies, let's be careful of that. And I want to encourage you to do that, because if these philosophies are unchecked, they will infiltrate in the classrooms. So I want to end with this. And you've heard me say it before, and every time you see me, I'm gonna say it. Because as an African-American mother and grandmother, I will not have my black and brown children being told that they are victims, that this is, you know, the racism is just everywhere and you'll never win. Because if we tell them that, then they will give up, and then they will become dependent. We don't want that. I don't want that. So I know that there are things being said on both sides of this issue, but as an African-American mother and grandmother, I don't want it either. CRT not on my watch. Thank you.
Thank you, Bev. I do, I do just want to clarify that the agenda for the Capitol Conference is part of our board meeting minutes. Michelle, Laura, and Sheri attended the Capitol Conference last year. I've attended it in years past. It is the agenda. It's impossible for any one board member to go to all of those seminars. A lot of them are at the same time. I'm not going to speak for anyone because I don't know what seminars they went to. Like any conference, you're going to have multiple opinions, and you're going to have multiple opportunities in different seminars. But I do appreciate you highlighting some of the things so that we're aware of what's going on. Next on our agenda, oh, Mr. Carbone, congratulations. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you very much.
And we look forward to a continued good partnership between the city and the schools.
Part of the reason why I'm here this evening. Jim Carbone, 12462 Saddle Brook Lane, Dr. Raiba, Ms. Palco, President Mikko, Vice President Hausen, and the rest of the board. Congratulations, Haley, Sheri, good luck. On behalf of Strongsville City Council, just want to wish everybody good luck this year. I wish you guys the best. We want to work together this year. I truly believe, and I've said this multiple times even here at this podium, that we cannot have the city we have without great schools. So we have a great city because I think our cities run very well, and we do have some great schools. So thank you very much. Anything you guys need, we want to continue that partnership. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
And I apologize, but we have a meeting, so I can't stay for your meeting.
Is there any other, anyone else who wishes to address the board during public comment? Next is appointment of liaisons to committees for one-year terms. I passed out a draft. My goal in the draft is always to balance giving everyone opportunity on the various, the various committees and liaisons, and also to reflect our individual interests, and also to try to balance opportunities for individual board members to gain relationship with each other. It's impossible to do it perfectly, but I try to do that. If we're comfortable with it, we can vote on it today. If we need time to review it, we can pause, review it, and then bring it back to the boards, to the next board meeting. Who should I put on the spot first? Haley, are you comfortable with it, or do you want to review it?
Yes, I'm comfortable.
Sharon?
I'm fine.
Okay. So for the minutes, city council representatives will be Laura and myself. Strongsville Education Foundation will be Michelle and Laura. Strongsville PTA Council will be Sharon. We do have room for another alternate if we wanted to assign one. Ohio School Boards, Ohio School Boards Association Legislation will be myself and Haley. Ohio School Boards Association Student Achievement will be Haley and Sharon as the alternate. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausen, second by Mrs. Bissell. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Mrs. Hausen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Calvain?
Yes.
Mr. Mikko?
Yes.
Ms. Stovall?
Yes.
And the motion carries, and I thank everyone for their commitment. This is where a lot of the digging in the dirt and getting the work done occurs, and it's a great place to learn and help the district. Next is reaffirmation. Third year of three-year term of Mrs. Michelle Bissell's appointment to Polaris Career Center, which is a very important position, and then Michelle's been doing a great job of it, and we look forward to another, another third year. Did you have any other comments, Michelle?
No. Our first meeting is next Tuesday, so that'll get our year started.
Great. Board committee appointments for one-year terms. Finance Committee is Laura and Sharon. Policy Committee is Haley and Michelle. And I know Cameron will shed a tear that I'm passing the baton off. I've forgotten how many years we've been doing Policy Committee together.
At least nine.
Glad someone's counting.
Yeah.
But it's a, it's a good committee, and it's good work. Facilities Committee is myself and Michelle. Business Advisory Council Committee is Haley and Sharon. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausen, second by Mrs. Bissell. Any discussion? Please take the roll.
Mrs. Hausen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Calvain?
Yes.
Mr. Mikko?
Yes.
Ms. Stovall?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Thirteen, Robert's Rules of Order will be used in the absence of board policy. Fourteen, we have an establishment of a service fund for fiscal year 2023. According to Section 3315.15 of the Ohio Revised Code, the Treasurer of the Board of Education has assigned, has certified that the number of pupils enrolled in the Strongsville City School District is 5,669 as of December 1st, 2021. And by law, a sum not to exceed $2 for each child enrolled, or $20,000, whichever is greater, may be set aside from the general fund to be known as the service fund to be used in paying the expenses of the Board of Education actually incurred in their duties or for their official representatives when sent out of the school district, promoting the welfare of the schools under their charge or in paying the expenses of board members to be of such boards actually incurred in training and orientation to the performance of their duties. Such payments shall be made only in such amounts as may be approved by the board on statement of the several board members or members to be furnished at the next succeeding regular board meeting. No board shall appropriate or expend a sum greater than $60,000 in any one school year, and therefore be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that a service fund be established by the Board of Education in the amount of $20,000. Recommendations by the superintendent authorizing the treasurer to a) reinvest available funds for 2022 in accordance with our board policy and established procedures. The results of such event, the results of such investments will be reported in monthly financial reports throughout the year, and b) to pay bills within the adopted appropriations in 2022. We now come to legal counsel appointments, which is a separate vote. Be it resolved that the superintendent of schools and his designees be authorized to contact legal counsel as necessary for the successful performance of their duties. Legal counsel is Squire Patton Boggs, Pepel and Wagner, Riley Law Firm, Walter &amp; Haverfeld, Brinsta, McIntyre &amp; Seed, and Peters, Kalal &amp; Macarcus. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausen, second by Mrs. Bissell. Any discussion? I will share with the public that the reason we have the number of firms we do is the, many of these firms have specific expertise, and we make sure that we can use them for that expertise. For example, Walter &amp; Haverfeld helps us with most of our human resources-related issues, and Brinsta, McIntyre, and Seed helps us with many of our property tax issues. Any other discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Mrs. Hausen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Calvain?
Yes.
Mr. Mikko?
Yes.
Ms. Stovall?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Board of Education meeting minutes, provided that the Board of Education members receive the meetings, the minutes of previous meetings at least five or more days in advance of a meeting, authorization is given for the board to waive reading of the minutes at that meeting. Resolution requesting notification, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the resolution, requesting that the Board of Education be notified by the Tax Commissioner of any application for exemption from taxation for any property located within the district. The resolution is pursuant to ORC 5715.27. We have Exhibit A, which is our tax budget for fiscal year 2023. Be it resolved that the, upon the recommendation of the Treasurer, that the tax budget for fiscal year 2023 be adopted. And at this point in time, I believe we have a presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mikko. A slight presentation to go over the tax budget. And what the tax budget is, it's an annual resolution that, it's an annual item that must be adopted by the Board of Education, submitted to Kiahoga County by the 15th of January of each year. It gets the, in their view, it gets the budget process started for the upcoming fiscal year. Our fiscal year is a July through June fiscal year, but the way they assess taxes, it's on a calendar year basis, so it's too overlapping. Fiscal year is a calendar versus fiscal year, but it sets the rates for the upcoming tax year, not the current tax year that we're in, but the next collection year for calendar year 2023. The tax budget has five schedules. The first schedule is a division of taxes levied, which is all the taxes that we have and their current effective rate compared to what they were originally passed. Schedule two is a statement of fund activity for the upcoming fiscal year. It's, what that is, is anticipated beginning unencumbered balance, anticipated revenues minus expenditures, and ending balance for the upcoming fiscal year 2023. Schedule three is any unvoted general obligation debt. Schedule four is voted, any voted debt. And schedule five is tax anticipation notes, which we have none. I'm gonna quickly go over these next slides. The first one is Schedule One, the Division of Taxes Levied. As you'll see, we have the several general fund operating levies. The current maximum rate authorized is 83.68 mils, but based on House Bill 920, as tax values go up, the effective rates go down to ensure we're collecting only the value of the tax that was levied at that time. So the effective rates adjust based on, based on that. For example- For example, this past year, we have the tri, the triannual update where values in the city went up by 15%. So, to combat that with House Bill 920, effective rates go down, so it doesn't increase anyone's taxes collectively. But depending on where a resident may be on, compared to the average, they might see an incremental increase or decrease in their taxes. So, the effective rate for residential is 35.63 mils compared to the authorized rate of 83.68, and the effective rate for commercial property is 45.09 mils. And if these were collected at 100%, we would receive about $72.1 million in the operating fund. Next is the Permanent Improvement Fund. The maximum rate authorized was 1 mil in 2004. With the effective rate, it's .66 mils and .72 for residential and commercial. And at 100%, that would bring in about 1.3 million. And lastly, it's the bond issue that was adopted in 2012. It was originally passed at 3 mils. A bond issue is not subject to House Bill 920. So, in order to have the House Bill 920 effect where you only collect what you need, the maximum rate authorized adjusts by the county each year to only collect what we need to pay off debt. With a combination of increased valuations and also refundings that we've done, this rate has decreased from 2012 from 3 mils to 2.3 mils. And from last year to this year, it increased by .5 mils based on the refunding that we did. And, and once the schedule is sent into the county, and they're going to send us, in March, they're going to send us a tax rate resolution, which is going to give us our new rate, or they're going to confirm the rates, but they might adjust the bond retirement rate. I am anticipating another reduction of the bond retirement rate based on the increase in valuations. So, any question on the first schedule?
Just to reinforce that, what that means to the, to the homeowner is, is the money that the county collects for that portion, for the portion to rebuild, to repay the bond, actually goes down.
Correct, and the, the half mil reduction from last year to this year will result in about $17 per $100,000 valuation for every property owner.
Thank you, George.
Schedule II, it's attached. It's also in the exhibit, not part of the presentation, but it's the upcoming, upcoming proposed budget at this time for fiscal year 23. By the time we get to June, it's going to change. The board will officially adopt a temporary budget in June for fiscal year 23, and then we'll adopt the actual budget in September of 2023. But this is currently based on our five-year forecast for fiscal year 2023. Schedule III is our unvoted debt. We currently have three, three items. There's two within the general fund. For energy conservation notes, that one was originally passed in 2008. Another one was originally passed in 2005, was to do improvements at the preschool and acquire school buses. That will expire in 2035. The energy conservation note will expire in a few, expire at the end of next calendar year 2023. And then, we also have one debt item out of the, out of Maraski, for the Maraski improvements that were in 2005. And that'll expire in 2034. However, there is a call date in 2024, which we may have an opportunity to either pay it off in full or refinance it. And in total, with outstanding principle, as of January 1st, these unvoted debts, the balance is 4.2 million. Schedule IV is our voted debt. We only have one, which was the 2012 bond issue for the construction of the middle school renovations of the high school and other construction projects throughout the district. The original amount was 81 million. Currently outstanding is, is about 60 million. And the final maturity date is December 1st of 2045. So, we've still got some time on that one. And the last schedule is tax anticipation notes, which we have none. So, any questions?
Thank you, George.
Thanks.
Next is Investments. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that the Board, authorizes the Treasurer to invest up to a maximum of 40% of the district's interim funds and commercial paper notes in accordance with Board Policy 6144. I will highlight that that policy is a conservative policy. It lets us maximize what currently is very little interest, but maximize what interest we can earn, but not risk or put any of the public's money at risk. District Credit Card Limits. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer per Policy 6423, the annual credit card limits per car, cardholder and/or account are approved. OSBA Annual Membership Dues and Subscriptions. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that the Board of Education renews its membership of the OSBA, including e公 publications effective January 1st through December 31st, 2022. OSB Legal Assistance Fund. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that the Board enters into a contract with OSBA for the Legal Assistance Fund Consultant Services for the period January 1st through December 31st, 2022. Cost is $250. House Bill IX, Ohio Public Records Training Certification. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that to be in compliance with all Ohio Public Records statutes and the Board of Education requirements, that the Treasurer, George K. Anignostu, be the designee on behalf of the Board of Education for public records training. Twenty-five, Broadcast of Board Meetings. In accordance with Policy 0169.3, the Board authorizes the public broadcast of regular board meetings during the calendar year. Resolution for Group Health, Vision, and Dental Insurance for Board Members. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent that Board members may participate at their own expense, and I highlight "at their own expense", in the group health, vision, and dental insurance plans provided to the employees of the district. We have a separate motion for Hiring Authority. Be it resolved that the Strongsville Board of Ed authorizes the Superintendent to employ personnel on a temporary basis between board meetings. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mrs. Bissell. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Stovall?
Yes.
And the motion carries. I'm very excited that it, number 28 is Superintendent's report, and I get to turn it over.
Mr. Miko, prior, we turn it over to Cameron.
Oh, do we want to jump?
Yeah, do we want to move, I'm recommending we move the consent calendar portion before the Superintendent's report, and then after the consent calendar. Also moving the board, other discussion, discussion items, 2022 Board Meeting Education Meeting Dates, prior to the Superintendent's report, that we keep the organizational meetings, stuff, items together, and then move to the work session items.
Anybody opposed? So, just for the public's understanding, we're just bunching the meeting together logically so that our votes flow correctly. This is one of the few meetings where it's, it's two separate meetings. It's an organizational meeting and a Board of Education meeting, so we're going to do all of the organizational stuff first, and then separate that from the rest of the meeting. Did I do everything right?
Correct.
Can I still turn it over to Cameron?
Or the consent calendar.
For the consent, oh, we're going to jump to the consent calendar right now.
Well, we're going to, actually, we're going to leave that one there. We're going to add another consent calendar after 27.
Okay. So, we are going to entertain in a motion for adoption of the consent calendar for the organizational meeting. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the organizational meeting consent calendar at this point in the agenda means that all items for the organizational meeting appearing in the agenda with asterisks are adopted in one single motion unless requested otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mrs. Bissell. Any discussion? Just to highlight again, we are, this consent calendar is the consent calendar for the organizational meeting. So, anything that we've discussed up to this point is what we are voting on to approve. George, take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Stovall?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Now, do I get to turn the meeting over to Superintendent Dr. Raiba?
No, we have one more organizational. Under Board Other.
Oh, okay, now I, I get it.
2022 Board Education Meeting Dates.
So, we have the calendar. The only one we need to bring resolution on is the Thanksgiving meeting. I'd like to suggest that we meet on Tuesday, November 22nd, unless that throws anybody off. Are we, we still have school at that point, correct?
Correct.
That Tuesday, yeah.
So, hearing no, no discussion on that, we will make the, we will change the November 24th to November 22nd. And then, Board Member Training?
Do we want to make a motion and vote on it?
Are we going to, do we, we can vote on it?
Yes, if someone makes a motion from the floor, then.
Before you do that, Mr. Miko, the only other thing that was on the docket was to possibly look at a Polaris date. So, if we have that finalized, we can change the, this right now. If not, we can vote on that at a different meeting. Did we ever confirm?
I don't, I'm not aware of it being finalized. I think we're going to.
Bob gave me two dates, and he said we could basically pick. He suggested March, April as a backup. And that was the direction I got from him, so I'm bringing that to you.
Which one did he suggest?
He suggested March, and he suggested work session.
Which I think makes sense.
Yes. So, that would be the March 10th meeting.
Unless I hear any opposition, let's do that now and make that, that Polaris. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mrs. Bissell. And the motion is to adopt our Strongsville Board of Education Meeting Dates. The two changes are November, Tuesday, November 22nd will be our regular meeting date, and the location of the March 10th meeting will be at Polaris Career Center. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Stovall?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Second for Board of Education Other is Board Member Training. OSBA Program for First Year Board Members. Be it resolved that the Strongsville City Schools Board of Education grants approval for Haley C. Stovcek to attend the OSBA Program, Board Member 101. The program will take place January 22nd through the 23rd. The cost to the register is $285. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Like to compliment our board members on taking their oath seriously and making themselves available for the training required. It's a, it is a good thing. Take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Stovall?
Abstain.
And the motion carries.
The anticipation.
Now, can I do it?
Yeah, so now to, for the minutes, we officially transition from our organizational meeting to our regular work session.
So, hopefully, our audience is as excited as I am that our organizational meeting is complete, and we will now transition to our regular meeting. Dr. Raiba?
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I'm excited, I'm going to bring up our Curriculum Director, Erin Green, and many of our staff members. I'll let her introduce as, as we get started. But what we've done, our work sessions this year, every work session, we've provoked, we've had a group of individuals or leaders in our district come up and share either how we're using the ESER funds to support students in our district, or the district has utilized our district funds in new ways to support our students and, and their, their work. So, today, I'm going to turn it over to Erin, but our focus for today is some of the, the new initiatives and work that she's been leading in her department to support our secondary English learner. So, Erin, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, well, thank you. And to echo Dr. Raiba, thank you for having us here this evening. We are excited to share a little bit of information about our English learner program. We are, I am, and I think the ladies are super proud of what we're able to offer this year. It's a little bit different, as we'll share. Also, welcome to our two new board members. We are happy to have you as well. So, talking about our secondary English learner offerings, this is abbreviated EL, so you will hear that sometimes as we speak tonight. This is a topic that maybe a lot of people aren't super familiar with, the population of English learners that we have in our district, how they contribute to our student population overall. So, tonight, I'm going to do some of the general sharing of the factual-type information, and then I'll turn it over to our experts here for the daily intricacies of, you know, what it looks like on a, a daily basis in the classroom, in the buildings. So, we're going to focus, as Dr. Raiba said, on our secondary, so that'll be our middle school and our high school programming tonight. Just as an FYI, we do have three elementary English learner teachers as well. One of them is ESER-funded, which has allowed the opportunity to have both our high school and our middle school EL teacher full-time, which I think, as you'll see, has made a remarkable, a remarkable benefit to the program. So, I want to thank the following people who are here giving up their evening after teaching all day. I am Erin Green, Director of Curriculum. Not thanking myself, but I do want to thank Carol McKnight. Carol's our secondary literacy coach. She's been integral in establishing first the program at the high school with our English learners, as well as then moving it into the middle school. Before, she was a literacy coach. She was a superstar in our English department as a teacher, department chair. So, she comes with a wealth of knowledge and a lot of background as to what these students need and how we can best help. We have Sarah Attikin, who is right there. Sarah is new to us this year. She has been a phenomenal find, coming to us from Dayton most recently. But she has a wealth of experience. She actually taught abroad for nine years. What else? You have a Masters in Applied Linguistics and TESL Certification, so she can get into a lot of the expertise. If you have any questions about our English learners, she's one of our super-go-to people. And then we have both Nicole Hackman, seated right there, and then Megan Marlett, to my right. We have, they are ELA teachers, English teachers. Nicole's at the middle school, Megan's at the high school. And again, they have their expertise in English content area, as that's our primary role. But they've also taken on the unique responsibility or challenge of co-teaching this, this year, and Megan's done it for a few years now, with our English learner teachers. And we're going to talk about what a benefit that is to these students so that they feel a lot more confident, gained knowledge, gain a lot of the skill sets that maybe they weren't gaining before we implemented these programs. I do want to mention that we have a high school EL teacher who is very recently on FMLA with a new baby girl. But she's phenomenal as well. but she's phenomenal as well, Allison Wadowitz. We'll see her in the video. I would be remiss if I didn't mention her, and she co-teaches with Megan at the high school. So, generalities, who makes up our English learner population in Strongsville City Schools? Who are we talking about when we're talking about the EL students, middle school and the high school? So, I put together some numbers for you. This is showing district numbers, number of English learner students served, broken down by building. And you can see our total served this year, at this point, is two hundred seventeen. Now, this varies honestly day to day, but it's around this number. We do have a few students, twelve to be exact, that have refused services, which they're allowed to do. So, that's two hundred and twenty-nine actual identified English learners in the district, which puts us at about four percent of our student population. On the right-hand side, just a little bit of trend data, so you can see where we've been and where we're going and the trajectory, I suppose. In seventeen eighteen, we had a hundred and thirty-five students, which was two percent of our population, so taking the actual number of students enrolled at that point. Eighteen nineteen, that increased to three percent of our population. Nineteen twenty, I'm sorry, it was three percent as well. And then, twenty twenty-one, this year, we're looking at four percent. So, when we hear that, often, we may think, you know, four percent, that's not a lot of our kids. But when you put it into numbers, and we're talking two hundred and twenty-nine kids in the program, that's a lot of kids, and it's not a subgroup that we would ever want to just kind of, you know, think, okay, they'll figure it out, they're on their own. And that's why we do the things that we do, and I'm so proud of what we're able to accomplish here in our programming.
Erin?
Yeah?
Just as a base question?
Sure.
Can we define what an English learner is?
Absolutely. Can, I do it after I talk about the languages, because I do have that coming up, and I can go into a little more detail.
You know, I wasn't going ahead in the presentation.
Or I could do it now, your choice.
No, I'll wait for the presentation.
Okay. This is a quick slide, but we're unique in that a lot of districts have a majority language. So, they may have, you know, eighty, eighty percent of their kids, eighty, eighty-five percent of their kids, speaking a singular language. At this point, we have twenty-six different languages in Strongsville City Schools. They are listed, I know it's small print, but the majority, or the largest number out of the two hundred and twenty-nine students, we have eighty-five students where Arabic is their primary language, and English is their secondary language. Secondarily would be Spanish, twenty-eight students. And one other point of emphasis, I guess, even when we look at Arabic, eighty-five students, there's also twenty-five-ish dialects of Arabic, so it doesn't just mean, you know, we can put these two kids together because they speak Arabic. So, we really have to work to meet the needs of our students and teach them English, because it's not enough to just pair them up or put them on an app because of our diversity. So, Richard, to your point, regulations, qualifications, so what is an English learner? How are they identified? What do we need to do as a district to serve them? So, I'm gonna jump to the right-hand side of the screen. Anytime a student enrolls in our district, they have to fill out a survey called a home language survey. And on that survey, if they mark that there's any language spoken in the home other than English, that's the first indicator. So, we then, I'll say, flag them to go on to the second part, or the second prong of the process. And what that is, is we assess the student for their English language proficiency. So, there's a mandated assessment that we use. It's called a OELPS, Ohio English Language Proficiency Screener. One of our English learner teachers will give that. And what that does is kind of tells us where are they with their language proficiency. Their overall score, if it falls in a one or a two, that's when we qualify them as an English learner. And I'll get into a little more detail about that scale in just a second. Whether the student is born in the United States or whether they come from other countries, it doesn't matter. It's more about that two-pronged test. So, once identified, then the student stays an English learner until they earn a passing score on our state test. So, just like we have the state tests for English Language Arts and math and the high school and, of course, exams, all of our identified English learners each year take the state OELPA, which is basically the screener, but it's the assessment piece. So, it's the Ohio English Language Proficiency Assessment. That goes to the state, and that plays a role into the state determining how we, as a school district, are meeting the needs of our learners. Requirements, there are both federal requirements as well as state requirements as to what we need to do to serve our English learners. It boils down, basically, we have to provide an equitable education opportunity for those students, just like we would any student. And then, the other critical component of that is we're also responsible for ensuring the families are able to communicate with us adequately. So, that may mean, and I know a lot of the ladies do this, they have apps that they can communicate with the families with in the family's home language or primary language. We also translate letters. We use translators. We have a translating service. So, there are multiple ways in which we ensure that what we're doing is also, the parents aware of it and informed, and it's in their language. So, just a quick, not that this is so important with regard to the, the actual terminology, but what's unique about our English learners, or anytime you have a student learning a language? Pre-functional is when they come in with no English. And as they can attest to, we do get pre-functional students relatively often at the high school, at the middle school, and at the elementaries as well. It becomes a lot more challenging at middle school and high school when they come with no English. And that's what we're gonna talk about. How do we help these students? So, it says, you know, pre-functional, they may not speak for weeks or months, and then they could start to use simple phrases. A beginner, they're gonna be in that stage of learning beginning English for probably, you know, six months. So, this is not a quick process. We have high beginners, intermediate, and then the most advanced, as still qualified as an English learner, it takes about four to ten years to get here. And that's why we need to start early. We do start early, but, you know, I think so often, we want to see these gains, but we have to be realistic. So, even with advanced levels, students cope in the classroom, but they still need help with things like vocabulary, idioms where it may not translate directly, writing content where it's heavy in, you know, content such as social studies. Couple other slides before I turn it over. With our actual Ohio English Language Proficiency Assessment, as I talked about, it's given every year. And this is actually one of our report card rankings. Now, because we haven't had a state report card for a couple of years with actual letter grades, we don't have a lot of data on this, but what they do at the state level is they take every child's, every English learner child's score on this OELPA, and then they give a projected growth target. So, then, we, as a district, have a target in which we need to meet to show growth. If we meet that, that's part of our closing the gap, then we get a associated number of points. You know, so it's not about the report card, it's not just about a test, but it's about are we truly closing gaps between our students? Are we helping them to gain English proficiency? So, they can function, you know, real world, also academically and socially in our buildings. So, the three levels from the OELPA, emerging, progressing, and proficient. And not until they reach the proficient level are they actually exited from EL status. So, they can't just say, I'm good, I've had enough, I'm gonna go ahead and, you know, drop out of being an EL. They have to show proficiency on that, and they are classified until that point when they earn all fours and fives in the domains of listening, reading, writing, and speaking. Moving into delivery models, just a little background as to where we've been. We get the authority or the latitude to address and serve our students as we best see fit. So, that's not mandated by law in which, you know, you must use this service delivery model. We need to do a model which is going to show growth and work with our district. And so, we have, you know, we look at the most comprehensive way to serve our learners. As I talked about, we have three elementary, a middle school, and a high school staff member that are specific English learner teachers, and they are phenomenal. At the high school, I've been here, this is my ninth year, and we've seen a few iterations of programs in which we're trying to find the best needs. And we're trying to match the staff that we have to what is going to be the system that we utilize. So, we, I have seen, you know, we started with an ELA course taught by just the English learner teacher. They had all the kids, they taught English. We transitioned to, okay, let's do a co-taught English class where we just put the students, who are English learners, in with a general education English teacher, and, you know, we, we help them a little bit, but we do the same curriculum that all tenth graders, for example, are doing. And now, we have the very successful co-taught model, as well as a newcomer or intensive course. And until this year, students at the middle school received support services in small groups or individually, we didn't have this type of programming. We didn't have an intensive or newcomer course. We didn't have a co-taught ELA slash EL course. So, Carol, again, was instrumental in replicating the success we saw at the high school at the middle school level. So, I am gonna turn it over to Carol McKnight. She's gonna talk just a minute about, you know, she's seen these kids, and what's the rationale behind it? Why do we do this? What are the benefits from it?
All right. So, obviously, the ultimate goal of our classes is to improve the English language proficiency for our students. But we found that, as a group and through these classes, that it goes way beyond that. And as Erin mentioned before, we've had some past struggles with how we were providing instruction for those EL students because we noticed that the population was changing. We were starting to get a greater population of students who had little to no English background. And so, we came up with this model of having the newcomer class, the immersion English class, and then continuing with the support class, which gives students opportunities to work on their other core class competencies. So, the newcomer class is really building upon those conversational English skills. And if you think about it, there are many students that come from families where they're the only ones that have any English language whatsoever. So, they are the, the voice, the spokesperson for their family. So, it may be up to them to make doctor's appointments, to look at the bus schedule. We certainly know the struggles that we're all facing in the middle of this pandemic. And think about if you are a family that's new to this country and you can't speak the language, how difficult it can be to even do some basic computer skills. So, we're working on those skills with our students. Our EL population also has to pass the financial literacy course, so we work on writing checks and looking at bank statements. So, again, a lot of those basic conversational, day-to-day skills that we need in that course. And then, the second course is a two-year course, which is the immersion course. That's co-taught with the EL teacher and the ELA teacher together. The ultimate goal here is that after that two-year period, that those students can go into the traditional ELA classroom for their final two years of high school, at least in the high school model, and then certainly moving them from the middle school. So, those students are missing those basic foundational skills that our high school students have. And so, we want to use that time in that immersion class to work on those basic skills of reading, writing, speaking, and listening. Please know that our EL students, regardless of the amount of English acquisition that they have, are required to complete the same credit hours for graduation, to get those graduation seals or pass those graduation tests. So, we don't want to do anything in terms of devaluing, devaluing the intent of the content standards, but we have to work on those basic building blocks with those students. And certainly, then, in our support course, support time, we work on those other content areas. Think about students who may not see a global map in the same way that we do or under, really, really understand that democratic process. So, that support time is used to help those students with academic language and science, and certainly with their math skills. And then, in addition to that, as a team, we've worked together to help educate our staff members who are working with those EL students that are integrated in their classrooms through helping them with best practices, with strategies, with software that's available, any tools that we can have, and we provide that ongoing support to our fellow staff members. And then, certainly beyond the academic piece of that is the social component. You know, how do we help our students from that EL population develop peer relationships? How do we help them find their way to their locker or to the lunchroom to have somebody to sit with to be able to get on the bus? And so, our teachers have done a phenomenal job of helping our students find a buddy and to work with them to become part of that social fabric of our schools. We want to be able, as part of our global competencies, to respect those students, not only for who they are, but also for their individual cultures, and certainly that our entire student population can learn from our students from those various backgrounds. And so, we found that this was such a successful model that we wanted to extend that down to the middle school and certainly now think about this as a multi-year process that we hope will ensure more success as students get to the high school and beyond high school. And in talking with Megan this morning, she's got a student in her class who just came to the country last year, who now has a job at Marx, another student who's applying to go to college at T R C, kids that are going into our Polaris program. So, we're seeing the ultimate success of our students becoming graduates of our high school and then moving on to career and college from there.
Excellent. Thank you. We had a sixty seconds that showcased some of this in action. So, I did want to play this. It's a little bit longer than sixty seconds, but you will see these three ladies here working with the students. And you'll get to see firsthand, if you haven't yet seen this or just to, you know, now that you have a little more background with it, see what it looks like and hear from them directly.
Our goals are to really help to maximize their English language development so that we can help them not only in their English classes, but also in all of their other classes, because our students have a lot of challenges, and so, we're working to find a way to ease some of those challenges that they have, not only within our English language classes, but in their other classes as well. For our students, relationship building is really important because the more that the students feel comfortable with their teachers, the more that the students are able to learn the language a little bit more, because they'll feel more comfortable. Allison Wadowitz and I collaborate a lot. Currently, in our class, we have probably five different languages, some of whom have just come to our school for the very first time and don't speak any English at all, some who have been here for years, so they speak a little bit more English. And so, we're always looking to see how we can best teach our students to help them progress, help them have a growth mindset, and to really, not only academically succeed, but within the school culture as well.
We have a lot of differentiation within the classroom. Recently, we've been doing two separate groups where I'll take a lower-level reading group, and she'll take a little bit higher one. So, a lot of times, either Megan will be explaining something in the front of the room, and I'll be over next to walking back and forth and kind of simplifying directions. So, it's just a lot of looking at the skills that we want to cover and trying to find ways that work with the student and the English level that they're at. I think that's the biggest thing, is that, yes, English will help you in everything that you do. It's not just you're learning this for a test. And, and you really do see that growth, and I love when I see like the kids are in the classrooms and they're asking their teachers, I don't understand this. And then, the teachers can actually give them that support and help them, because it is a great sense of achievement for them when they can communicate what they really are trying to say.
And this is an exciting new program because it's great to be able to work and teach English in a model where Sarah specializes in teaching English language learners, and I'm a language arts teacher. We can work together collaboratively to get kids where they need to be before we put them in to a regular grade-level English language arts class.
Underline that?
We have kids with varied ranges of needs, and we've always tried to meet those students using multiple levels of support, more support for kids who need it, more enrichment for students who don't need it. And this is just part of that plan for our English language learners. Because you can imagine, if you have limited English proficiency, to enter a school and meet other kids and make friends, that can be challenging even for kids who speak English well. So, it's exciting to work in a class, and we see the kids, they start to have, you know, they're joking with each other, and that's exciting to see, because we know they're really connecting with each other, and then learning will be easier.
An English language learner means that, at home, they speak another language. So, we have about forty-one students here at the middle school, and they represent ten different languages. English language, when we talk about it, the needs are so diverse. So, we have some students that are coming from a language background where the alphabet is very similar. It's very easy to transfer those skills. And then, we have other students who are coming from a language background where the alphabet is very different, even the direction of text. And so, they're gonna have to learn more, just even decoding or phonics, because it's very different how we learn when we're learning another language. Middle school is a really, really important time. So, if we're catching them now, and we're working with them so intensely, and with the ELA teacher and collaborating, if we're really gonna be able to help them bring up those skills... skills so that they can be successful in middle school and at high school and beyond.
You know, as superintendent, I'm just so proud to see the continued collaboration, work, and development to help support our students and our families, no matter what their needs may be. As always, thanks for watching, and go make it a great Mustang week.
I just love that because it, it shows, you know, kind of a video, but real time, I'll say, what these ladies are doing on a daily basis. And it also showcases some of our great work by Scott Benson, so I do want to thank him for that as well. At this time, I am going to have, turn it over to Megan, Nicole, and Sarah to talk just a little bit more. They can answer questions that you may have. But how does this co-taught class work? What are some of the activities that they do? I, I left it broad for them in what they want to speak about because they're, again, they're the experts, day in and day out. So Megan, I'm going to start with you and anything you want to share with the board.
Yeah. So, you know, one of the ways that I can speak about this class too is I did teach the, one of the other iterations of the course when it was a co-taught course with some of the students in a regular ninth grade class. And one of the things that I noticed from teaching that is that it was a lot more fast-paced for the students. So this new course that we started last year allows us to meet the needs of the students at a slower pace so that they can work through and start to gain some of these reading, writing, speaking, and listening skills at a level that works for them. And so one of the things that, you know, we're working towards, and Carol mentioned this, is preparing them to be able to be in that 10th grade class with some of those supports that they need. So throughout the course, I've seen a lot of strides that the students have made. You know, I think about last year when we were remote and trying to just get students on a Google Meet. You know, because some of my students, they had just come here at the end of August, beginning of September, and, you know, trying to get them on a Google Meet. And at the time, you know, trying to get them to speak on, on a camera, you know, I got a lot of no microphones and things like that. And now I have these students who want to come in and have conversations with me. And so I think that's something really exciting, and I've seen this growth in them and the, their ability to have those conversations and want to talk to me and other people in the class as well. So some of our activities, you know, I think for me at the high school level, it's really important that students are writing at least one thing every day, if not more, and speaking at least one thing every day in English class. So we'll come in, I'll have the objectives on the board, and the kids are reading the objectives, so they're getting that English language practice right from the very beginning of class and throughout the entirety of the class. So Allison and I work on a lot of strategies for their reading and writing skills, so I'll talk a little bit about some of the activities that we've done. And we like to do a lot of hands-on because it allows us to see the creativity that the kids have and how they can work through a critical thinking process. Just because they don't know the language doesn't mean that they don't have the skills to be able to do some of these things. So what we'll do sometimes is use kind of more, a more simple text. So we started at the beginning of the year, we used something as simple as the Three Little Pigs, which was something easy enough for some of the more advanced students to understand. And then I also have students who are coming in who don't speak any English. So it was an easy enough text that we could bridge that gap for them to understand. But ultimately, what our goal was, was to focus on some speaking and listening. So we utilized the Makerspace in the media center. And what the students did was, they were tasked with creating all three houses that, like the Three Little Pigs had, so the straw, sticks, bricks, houses. And they had to work with a partner. So it was promoting conversation and collaboration with another student. And so they had to work through the whole process themselves, where they chose all of the materials for all three of the houses. They had to have conversations with each other to make those decisions about what would work best. That picture that was on the previous slide, that was some of my students, and I swear I did not ask them to pose for that, they really were having fun doing this and enjoying the, the process of creating this. And our goal with it was that they created a presentation. And I think sometimes we take for granted that we can put together a Google slide presentation. But these students were working on how you put bullet points in. They had to take a picture and insert it into the presentation, and then they presented it to the class, so they were working on some of their speaking skills. We also, one of the other things that I really like to do is, I call it a conversation scavenger hunt, because I think one of the most important things for students to continue to learn English, not only in my class, but in their other classes as well, is they have to build relationships with people, whether it's peers in their classes or their other teachers. So what they have to do is they have to create questions, and they pick other teachers that they have, and they have to go and ask the teacher these questions and have a conversation with them and report back in class what this conversation was, so they can build those, those relationships and have that trust with those teachers. And then we do a lot of other, like close reading. So we'll actually pull in some ninth grade, close reading texts, like texts that we're doing in ninth grade. But instead of reading maybe the entirety of the text, we'll take smaller sections to allow them to build that confidence that, okay, I can look at this text, but I can take it very slowly, and I can start to learn those skills such as characterization. I can start to have an opinion about a text that I'm reading. And then we also do a lot of independent reading, trying to get kids to select the books that they want to read, because the more that they're reading in English, the more that their skills are going to build. And so, you know, I had a student the other day, this was like, I was very excited about this. I wasn't there, and he returned a book and then left me a note that he checked out a new book from my classroom library. So I was so excited. He was not as excited as I was when I told him about my excitement, but, you know. So, so yeah, so Allison and I are really working to kind of just help these students with all of those skills, their reading, writing, and speaking and listening. And Mrs. Battle has really helped us too in the media center when we're utilizing the Makerspace. And some of my students have gone in there too during their study halls, and they've, she has like a puzzle area, and I've had a student who is working on a puzzle, and she's paired him with another student who is not in my class, so kind of building some of those relationships with other students within the school as well.
Thank you, Megan. And I think you can glean from that what a phenomenal teacher Megan is, the great partnership that she and Allison have. And I think my favorite part in listening to this is knowing that we're not compromising the grade level standards. You know, we're not taking it down to a first grade level, but we are building in scaffolds. We are building in accommodations. It's going to take some time, but you heard Megan talk about, we're still doing grade level standards, like characterization and those type of things. Maybe not using, you know, to kill a mockingbird at this point, but we will get there. It's going to take time. So I appreciate everything she does, of course. Next, we have both Nicole and Sarah, and this is their first-year partner together. Nicole's been a phenomenal choice because of her passion. I think you'll see that ring true here as, as she talks a little bit about the class. And, you know, Sarah, she, she's a great fit as well. So who ever wants to start, or if you want to kind of tag team?
I'll start. So one of the things that I kind of wanted to reiterate that came up in the video, but also people keep mentioning needs. And I think that's kind of the question a lot of people have when they ask about, what are EL students? Like, what are these learners like? And when we think about language and learning a language, we might use our own experience from learning Spanish or French, but those needs that you had during that experience are very different than our students'. So when we were learning in high school, we often were with our peers who had the same language. Maybe the goal was more conversational, and maybe it wasn't, we weren't immersed in that environment. But these students have a very different experience. They are coming from different language backgrounds. They all have different experiences in their own education. Some students are literate in their, in their first language. Some students are coming and they're not literate in their first language. Some students, as we mentioned in the video, they are coming from a different alphabet background or a different writing background. And so they have to learn phonics. And this is especially difficult when you're entering in middle school and high school. You know, in kindergarten, when your peers are also learning the alphabet, it's not as, you know, as much of a gap. But when you're coming into the middle school and high school, that could be a huge gap just to start to learn with the basic phonics or basic text direction, or just even turning the page and looking at the text features. So there's a lot of, there's a wide range. And then other students are coming in, and they might have a similar language back, oh, sorry, similar alphabet. They have cognets, which are similar words between languages, and maybe they just need a little grammar and vocabulary, and they're going to make strides a lot faster. So I love the three courses that we provide because it really meets the students where they're, where they're at and what their needs are. And, sorry. The one thing I wanted to talk about, the ELA course, is I absolutely love this course because even though we're still teaching them some of the more basics like grammar and vocabulary, we're still able to bring in those standards. And we can still teach things like inferencing and characterization and for, but we just need to find an appropriate text to do that. But we can still teach that skill. And one of the, my favorite activities that we did recently was the Christmas Carol. All the seventh graders were reading the Christmas Carol, and the high schoolers put on a production, and our students still got to participate in that experience. We found a simplified version of the Christmas Carol that our students were able to read, and they were able to talk about character change, but we just had to scaffold it, and we just had to find the appropriate level of text for them. And I thought that was a really great experience, that they got to have the same ELA experience as their peers. They got to go to the production of the Christmas Carol and know what they're watching. And I think that they will be able to take those skills into their future classes as well.
And I'll say, as I teach ELA seven as well, regular grade level, seventh grade English, where we teach the Christmas, you know, Christmas Carol with that group of students. And our English learners learned the same terminology. We taught a lot of the same definitions, same terms for drama that were being taught in the regular, the regular grade level classes. Again, you approached it a different, a different way, a different explanation. We changed the definitions, they're a little bit more approachable, but they're still learning the standards, but they're learning it at a level that's approachable for them. And they like to do read-alouds a lot. They like to, we also did a read-aloud of Frankenstein. They really liked that a lot. It gives them a chance to practice their speaking. It gives them a chance to listen and hear each other speak. They went through the pronunciations ahead of time and prepared, get over the fear of speaking in front of other people, which is a problem for native speakers, right? I feel like I'm tripping over words right now, right? It's a problem, problem for native speakers. So it's something we want to teach our students to do, even though English isn't their first language. And we practice a lot with that, and we've done a couple of activities like that, and they really seem to enjoy them.
What a great partnership. I am just so proud of these ladies. You know, I've been in all the classes, I've seen it, but to hear them talk about it, you know, I applaud you. I could not be more pleased with what you guys are doing. So what questions for the board can we answer for you? Anything about programmatic or the students that we're seeing? Anything that's kind of, that you're wrestling with at this point?
Can someone tell me what an English, an EL teacher is, does, or, or is certified or what have you? What do you have to do to be a EL teacher different than being a sensitive English teacher?
Sarah, would you like to take that?
Sure. So an EL teacher is going to have more extensive background in kind of the progression of learning, like grammar and learning like syntax. Will also have more familiarity with learning vocabulary and linguistics in general. So my background is a master in applied linguistics, and we come back, come from it from a different set of standards as well as the ELA standards. So you would need more expertise in language development in just how, what is the progression? So where do you start with teaching? Do you start with subjects and verbs, and then, you know, which tense do we start with? And so that's something that maybe the other seventh grade teachers, they might refine, but they don't have to start perhaps from those basics. So I think that was one of the bigger difference, the, the more major differences. We'd also have to have background in phonics as well. So that's something that maybe a lot of the seventh grade teachers have familiarity with, but not expertise in. So those would be some of the bigger things, I would say.
Is that a certification?
Uh, yes. So I am licensed in TESOL.
T E S O L. Teaching English to students of other languages.
Lots of acronyms in the field.
So that is a requirement for our, when we're hiring EL teachers, that they have the TESOL certification. Michelle, do you have a question?
Yeah. I'm looking at the numbers of our students. And, and I'm noticing that there's much higher concentration at the elementary level. Is that typical, or is that something that's newer as our numbers have risen in, in general?
I believe that because when they come in younger, they're identified. And so once they've tested, taken the OALPA, and they've achieved a mastery score, proficiency score, then they're no longer identified. So possibly by the time they get to the middle school, we've taken, you know, this large group, we've taught them well, or they just needed some additional instruction, and they've since tested out. You're welcome.
How much time during the day do you get to spend with the students? Is it a normal, typical class period, or is it a block schedule?
So it depends on the student and their needs. So students that are a higher proficiency, I see them for a support class, and that's about 45 minutes, it's one period. And that will be when they come in, and they usually bring work from their other classes, and we help them and support them in those, in the, particularly the academic language. For the students that are lower proficiency levels, we see them, I see them for three periods a day. That would be, one is the newcomer class, and we're focusing a lot more on that conversational English, learning grammar, vocabulary, but also bringing in vocabulary from their content classes as well. So the curriculum that we use is really nice in that it has like a section for math and a section for science. And so it's bringing in that vocabulary that they can go and use in their other classes, but at a, you know, at a more basic level. And then I have them for an EL support class, so I help them with their other classes, and then the ELA class. So it just depends on where, where their needs are and how often I would be able to see them.
Your, your schedule is action-packed.
Yes.
Surmise, yes.
All the other EL teachers that I talk to from other districts are jealous because I really get a lot of time to work with them, and I really be, I'm able to really address those needs.
And that's what we found over the years. You know, pulling them for 15, 30 minutes a week isn't enough. It's not making an impact. So that's why we've moved to this model, and we're seeing gains.
One question, Sarah, I have for you is, one of the most common questions I get about English learners or English learner teachers is, don't you have to know the language of the students you're working with to help them learn English? So can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah. So I get this, this question a lot. And I do, I do know some other languages to various levels of proficiency. And having learned a language is helpful in that it helps me understand what my students are going through. And I'm actually not very good at learning languages, so I feel like I'm more sympathetic towards our students. But it's impossible for me to know all of those 26 languages, plus more that I've taught in other schools and countries. And so you don't really need to know the language to be able to teach it, or to teach, to teach English. So we communicate, we use a lot of visuals, we use a lot of gestures and kind of miming, and we start with the very basic, you know, vocabulary, just using one word and building up the sentences. And so you get really resourceful. I always say, like, one of the, the most, to teach, to teach EL, you need to be patient and you need to be a problem solver. And so you need to be really patient and work through it, work through the communication, but you also have to be creative in how am I going to communicate this? And how are we going to have this communication? So, no, you don't, you don't need the language. But it does help, whenever I have students that I work with, I do try to learn a little bit about their language background to kind of figure out where is going to be the, like, the harder areas for them. For example, are there certain sounds that they don't have in one language, in their language, that we have in English that they're going to have, struggle with more? Or is there a certain grammar point that, like, for example, certain languages drop the subject? And so when they're speaking in a sentence, they just drop that subject and they don't need that. And so we might see, oh, you keep dropping your subject when you're speaking in English, what's going on? So understanding those errors and how they transfer is also helpful. But by no means am I an expert in those languages. I just do a little bit of digging.
Who hired her? Any other questions for any of the ladies here?
How often do the languages change?
Honestly, I said daily, but that, it's a true statement. We have kids that move in and move out, some of the, you know, a little bit more transient with the population. When I last looked at, last time I did this, it was even different off by, you know, it was 25 languages or 27, I don't remember which way. But we'll get a language sometimes that I've never heard of. And so as Sarah said, you know, I have to look at it and do a little research, is where is this from? And, you know, where is this from and, you know, how do we even begin to tackle this? So quite often.
I think if you look back 10, 15 years ago, Ukrainian was the most popular language, second language we had in the district. You know, the, the fastest growing language in, in student population right now is Hispanic students. And Spanish has been a language that's increased, although still, you know, I think it was 24, 25.
28.
28.
Ish.
Ish ballpark, but that, so, so even if you take a look at the last handful of years, the language needs have changed.
So is there, is there a tipping point where we say, hey, we have enough people that it would make sense to have an employee that knows the language?
So I will say, I'll let the experts answer that. We used to have, when Ukrainian was a very popular language, we used to have tutors that would speak Ukrainian, that would kind of almost be, if you think like a classroom aide, they would be in the classroom, they'd sit next to the student or near the student, they'd help support the student, maybe translate. And that's no longer in place in the district. First of all, it becomes insurmountable to provide that much staff. And then we found it wasn't an effective practice to truly build the language skills. Sarah, I don't know if you would like to speak any?
Yeah, so I know last year, they employed a Arabic tutor to help one of our students that was particularly low proficiency. And that, I think, helped ease the process for, as they came in the first year, but it didn't necessarily teach them English. And so as he's gained a little bit more confidence in the school and navigating the classes and making friends, we've been able to transition to more just focusing on building those English skills. A large majority of our students are high enough proficiency where they have quite, they have conversational English, but they struggle with the more academics English, especially literacy skills. So in that case, we don't really see the need for a translator or someone that maybe speaks the, the first language.
Okay, that makes sense.
And I would just say, one other point is, students tend to rely upon speaking that, you know, their native language, if they have somebody there all the time that is also speaking.
So I, as we, as we wrap up, I would just like to thank the board for your support and resources to make this program a reality. As Erin said, I think it's a valid point. 4% doesn't sound like a large number, but when you talk about 229 students, young people, and what that must be like to go, you know, I've traveled abroad and had short experiences where nobody knew English, and what that must feel like on a daily basis. So thank you for your commitment as a board to the resources to do that. And for all of you, you know, that are here presenting and doing this work on a daily basis, truly appreciate what you're doing. You know, Nicole and Megan, adding, this is a, this is a whole nother teaching experience, right? This is not like, hey, I've got another ELA 7. This is a whole new set of skills that you're working on and, and working with, co-teaching, it's not easy work. And I know you have a phenomenal partnership. And Sarah, as we've said multiple times, we're so blessed to have you in a district, in our district. And Carolyn and Erin, for your, for your leadership and work and coaching and, and not being stuck on, hey, we've got a model in place, but how can we make it better for our kids? And it's great to know that we've got a system in place now, how we can best educate our, our students that are, are learning a second language. So just commend all of you for the work you're doing and appreciate the effort you give our kids in our district.
Thank you so much for being here, thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and we appreciate your time and your efforts.
I'll give Erin a break with all of her presentation. We do have one item under curriculum, an overnight trip for the wrestling team. Be it resolved upon my recommendation that the Strongsville High School Wrestling Team travel to Perrysburg, Ohio, to participate in the Perrysburg Invitational, January 7th to 8th. Transportation is via school bus and expenses are paid by the Mustang Wrestling Club. We do have a few items under human resources, that'll turn over to Jenny.
Thank you. Under human resources this evening, I have following items for your consideration. Under C1, we have the retirement of a certificated staff member. We recognized Becky at the last staff meeting, we had to extend her dates a little bit, she, she just can't leave us. So this is just a change in retirement date for her, from January 3rd through January 12th. We also have a retirement of a non-certificated staff member, Kathy Cola, our district secretary assigned to the transportation department. And again, we'll, we'll officially recognize her in our, at our celebration in May. And finally, under C2, we have a change in rate of pay for our non-certificated staff. This has to do with, in accordance with the Ohio Department of Commerce increase to the state of Ohio minimum wage, the hourly rate for the following classification will change effective January 1st. 2022 for non-certificated substitutes for our cafeteria from $9.23 per hour to $9.30 per hour, and we are still looking for subs, so if that interests anybody, we would love to have you. And that concludes my report.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Any questions for Dr. Reba? Next is meeting notification.
Consent calendar. So this is for the consent calendar for the work session items.
As long as someone's keeping me on the straight and narrow. So we now have the consent calendar, action by the Board of Education in adoption of the regular meeting consent calendar at this point of the agenda, means that all items appearing in the agenda with asterisks are adopted by a single motion unless requested otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mrs. Bissell, any discussion? Hearing none, George, take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
And Ms. Stovall?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Now I can do meeting notification?
Yes.
Yes, you can.
Meeting notification, the next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled to be held, I'll put my calendar away.
January 27th.
January 27th at 7:00 PM in this building, in this room. I will highlight for the community that that is a new pattern for us. This year, we are switching to the second and fourth Thursdays in general of the month, except for exceptions. But after this meeting, we, the next one will be the fourth Thursday. If you come on the, on the third Thursday out of habit, I will tell you to go home. And then I will go home. We do have reason for executive session on the topics of?
To consider the employment dismissal and discipline of a public employee.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mrs. Bissell, any discussion? Hearing none, George, take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Stovall?
Yes.
The motion carries. We will enter into executive session at 8:45. We have no expectation of further business. I congratulate our new board members once again, I congratulate the team, we have an exciting year ahead of ourselves, and thank you for your attention. Have a nice evening.